All right, that's the clock I'm using up there on the TV. So it's 7:00 PM. We'll call our meeting to order. Welcome you guys formally in just a second. We've got one action item ahead of you which is to approve the minutes of our last meeting. You guys quit cheating on the proposal and look at the minutes for the last meeting, please.
It's a good sign of your visual communication.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There was no public independence. Did we have someone?
Mike.
Mike where?
Mike where?
In attendance.
He said that Abby should be paid more.
Oh, yes.
Because I am.
Advocating for Abby Kenney raises.
That's it.
Number 8 clances.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. Any other comments or suggested revisions? If not, will somebody make a motion, please?
Motion to accept with the edit.
Simon? Hold on a favor.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I don't know, maybe it'd be best if we can just start and introduce ourselves. I don't know how much you know about the background of the committee, but so I'm Mark Fiorentina. I'm the first electman in town.
Abby Kenney, Director of Community Development. So I'm a staff liaison to this committee.
Okay.
Kathy Kanan, Reporting Secretary.
Martha Schweiger, Member of the Development Commission, currently Chair of the Development Commission.
Jonathan's a member of the community randomly picked out of a pool of interested people.
I'm Meg Jabeley, and my background's in design for human health, and I'm also in planning and zoning.
I'm Frank Fish. I'm principal at BFJ, and actually made of Hartford, so this is sort of a general area that we've done a bit of work in, greater Hartford area, Connecticut as well, some other places where we'll show you.
Suzanne Goldberg, I'm a project planner with BFJ Planning.
And I'm Jonathan Martin. I'm an associate principal at BFJ Planning, and I usually head up urban design and comprehensive planning, physical planning side of things, zoning, design guidelines, and things like that.
If we can go to the next slide, I guess.
Two members of our team are online.
Yes, oh, sorry, I should introduce Suzanne. I should introduce George Giacomo and also Thomas Madden. And actually, if we go to the next slide, what actually, the slide after that, I'll explain how they fit into this whole thing. We've got a sort of introductory slide, so just for the agenda tonight, we'll do a team overview first, and then I'll just go through a little bit of the planning experience of BFJ, and then turn it to Suzanne on the project scope, and then she'll turn it to Jonathan on an important part of that scope, urban design. And then George Giacomo is our traffic partner. He'll be talking about transportation. And then Thomas Madden will be talking about real estate. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see everyone here. So here's myself, Frank Fish, Jonathan in design, Suzanne is our project manager, so the three of us are here, and then George will join remotely. George is in charge of transportation and mobility in our office, and then Thomas Madden is in charge of real estate and market analysis in our office. That's the core five of us that will be on this interview. And the next slide just gives me a chance to say a little something about our history here in Connecticut, and basically, we were founded in 1980. And our first big job here in Connecticut was riverfront recapture in Hartford. There are many, by the way, because it's a success, there are many people who will all say that, you know, they were involved, and that's true. But we, as a firm, Riverfront Recapture Plan, aren't Amazon. We are the ones who worked for Aetna and Travelers, who provided the money and were therefore the day-to-day company. And Mayor Miller, that goes back a bit, I'm dating myself, and that was one of the first big projects here in Connecticut that we did, leading to the foundation of our Connecticut office, which used to be in Farmington and is now in Stanford, Connecticut. So we've been at work in Connecticut since basically about 1982, beginnings of Riverfront Recapture. Led to other things, a lot of neighborhood studies in Hartford, plan of development, POCD in Weathersfield, Illum field, East Hartford, Canton. So we've done a lot of work in the area, and all this map shows is just where we've done some POCD work, but where we've done a lot of other planning projects also, and we're going to try to emphasize those a little bit. But we're organized as a firm, you can see the five groupings there, planning, zoning, and then urban design, Jonathan heads up, which is why Jonathan would be a very keen role in this, because we read your RFP and we've looked at Center, and as there's a very important urban design, I think, element there in landscape design. Environmental analysis, real estate, which Thomas Madden will cover, and then transportation is George Giacomo will cover. So that's, so we can go to the next slide, and this slide is just our organization as a team. I'll act as the principal in charge, and as you can see, Jonathan in charge of design. Suzanne will, job, and Suzanne is great at it, is to keep us all in line and make sure we meet deadlines, and also Suzanne, as you said, I don't know, I mean, that's a great writer, and will be able, her job as project managers, keep us all, keep our team on schedule. And then George on the right, transportation, then Thomas as real estate advisor. Thomas, by the way, I introduce himself later, he was economic development chief really in Stanford for many years, so he has a lot of experience in economic development, I think was responsible in bringing new tenants to Stanford. So that's the organization, and then, no, the next slide, sorry, I gotta remember when I said next slide. The, basically, I just wanted to show you briefly a couple of projects we're kind of very proud of. Wilton Center, we just finished last year. Jonathan really let up the effort on urban design. It is, in Wilton Center, there's things that are similar, I think, to Granby Center here, and our job was to produce a master plan of it, which we did. And by the way, if you're interested in it, it is online on the Wilton website, but also we have hard copies if you ever want it. I think they were very prouded with it, and they were not, they were, how do I say this? The four members of PNC that were headed up the committee were all architects, and they were architects with very solid opinions, so, and Jonathan was able to navigate that and come up with a plan, not only a plan, but a form-based code to follow up the plan, so an implementation strategy for Wilton Center. And Wilton Center to me is unlike, I'm from the Madison-Gilford area, I live in Madison, very used to Guilford ring, I'm very used to in the New England kind of flavor, and that's not Wilton Center. Wilton Center is sort of a group of suburban shopping areas kind of mixed together with sort of multiple ownerships, and so I think it was something we wanted to pick and show you that we're used to dealing with, you know, downtown center. That may not be Guilford, you only know if you're Durham, I can name a few. And then New Canaan. I would just want to mention New Canaan because we did a facility study for them and also a downtown market analysis for them, and I think those studies came out pretty well. The new, the new, I shouldn't call it new, the addition to the town hall in New Canaan came out of our facilities work in the downtown. There was a big controversy earlier, they should build a new city hall, or town hall, I should say, or they should use other facilities that they had, and our recommendation finally was to add on to it so that we could preserve, it's got an historic facade, so that we could preserve the old building, put all the new technology in a wing of the building so it's not fully air-conditioned, and the super, the first electman at the time was a former IBM guy, and he was into technology, and all the technology's there, and the whole place is wired now. So we're kind of happy with it. And the next slide, if you go to the next slide, that's Glassenberg. One more slide, yeah, and it's Glassenberg, Connecticut. Glassenberg does not have a cohesive center despite their best efforts, and they had several companies in, one Suzuki out of the Boston area, but our job was to come in and try to combine our traffic analysis with our economic analysis, and try to make sure that the center of Glassenberg had the right mix in it, and some of our recommendations actually in Glassenberg to put additional, some additional residential in, but in a very targeted way, and they followed that. They had an opposing view from Yale University and from their, they don't have, partly their architectural program, which was going much more in a form-based code area, and Glassenberg did not want that, so we came up with more conventional zoning techniques to carry out the Glassenberg plan. And then this final one, the next slide will show you Mount Kisco, and by the way, all these drawings, all of them except the photograph, that is Jonathan's work. So it's urban design. In Mount Kisco, we did both their plan for downtown. We followed it up with a very specific RFP, and it's a little different because they do have a train station, which you don't have, but, and that led to some, a design project, new residential with retail on the ground floor, and that RFP was answered by a developer by the Gotham. So I think these are all references for us. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Suzanne.
Everyone.
Oh, next slide, sorry.
Thank you. As Frank mentioned, I would be the project manager on this. I'd be doing the day-to-day communication with you, as well as Frank and Jonathan on our side, and at the bottom, you can see we have staff and project team meetings, and those are really key to making sure that throughout the process, we're providing you with updates, information, deliverables, to make sure that we're staying in a coordinated approach and constant communication, to make sure we're on the right track, and there's buy-in throughout the entire process. So zooming out at the timeline, it's about a 10-month scope, as you can see, and we split it up into five phases approximately. So the first phase would be in the first and second months, or it would be the first month, and that consists of that initial kickoff meeting with the committee, as well as members from the staff and PNC, and that's a key meeting to set the tone, to identify what the goals are, what key elements from the POCD and other studies you want to pull out and emphasize through this plan, and then also to develop a style for the plan. So what types of charts, graphics, the look and feel of the plan. We know that identity is important to a plan, making sure that has a consistent feel, and also that it's something engaging, that people actually want to read, and it doesn't just sit on a shelf. So the second phase would be to review existing documentation and plans, and we know that you have done an extensive amount of work leading up to this, so we want to take all of that into account. We know we're not starting from scratch here, we're fitting into a larger role, and part of that is looking at your previous engagement, which we'll cover in a next slide, and the work you've already done to achieve a shared vision through those workshops, and then also looking at your existing zoning, to make sure that, you know, your zoning is, to identify any barriers to sustainable development, right from the get-go, that we can focus on throughout the rest of the process. The third phase would be our, the chunk of our analysis and fieldwork. So we included some subcategories here of what that would consist of, things like demographics, market analysis, existing land use, and what's key about this phase is that this would include, you know, an analysis of the study area with honing in on things like site and building conditions, interviews with tenants, where there's commercial vacancies, where there's historic or architectural landmarks or specific elements that you want to maintain or preserve. So that is where we would, that would consist of most of our analysis, and that would result in an existing conditions memo and presentation, which you would be able to take with you even after the process is done. The fourth phase is to develop preliminary concepts and recommendations, and so this looks at specifically land use as well as design, transportation connectivity, and the town green as one of those key touchstones in the community. And as you can see on the bottom, if you look at the public presentations, so this fourth phase, the end of the fourth phase, and the beginning of the fifth phase, which is the refinement of concepts and the development of the final recommendations, aligns with that public workshop during the end of the sixth month. And so that can really be what you want it to be. We have ideas of how we've done public workshops in the past. It could be, you know, town hall style or more interactive, community roundtables, things like that, but that would be a chance to show the work that you all have done so far in coordination with us and get feedback. That way, we're going to move into the next phase of the final recommendations. We make sure that there's real consensus from constituents and there's buy-in from the town, and those are things that are key to make sure that the plan actually happens, to make sure everyone is on the same page, and people feel like they're informed and the process is transparent. Part of that final phase is also coming up with those implementation strategies, and like we said before, we don't want the plan to sit on the shelf. So who are the departments involved? What are possible funding sources? What sort of changes would have to be made to make sure that this actually comes to life? So that would result in the final completion of the final report, and then there's also, you know, the final deliverable, and then during that ninth month, we also have the final presentation and approval process to make sure that you all are comfortable with the final project and the public has a sense of what is the outcome of all this work you have done through this process. Next slide. So as we stated before, you all have done a lot of work so far, and it's great for us to see, you know, we're all community planners at heart, so we love to see the amount of time and effort you all have put into the workshops, and specifically the community design workshops, we took a look at those findings, and we pulled out some of the key themes that we think we are just starting points for us to build upon, and we took a look when we were walking around the town center today, what are these key elements, to see how they relate to each other. We noticed things like walkability, intersections, that was pointed out by the public as being a key element or priority that they wanted to highlight, feeling safe, feeling like there's connectivity between sidewalks and different businesses, accessible design, making sure that the town center is a place for people of all ages, all abilities, making sure it's designed universally for anyone who might want to use it, environmental sustainability. We know that you're all aware of climate change and the issues that we face right now. We want to make sure that any development moving forward has that forward-thinking, sustainable development mindset. And then business connectivity. As stated before, we know that a town center is not always as successful when, you know, people are parking and going into one store, getting in their car, and then leaving. We want to make sure that people are able to walk around or see multiple, visit multiple stores at once, and really have a way to connect those businesses and link them together. And then lastly, beautification, things like signage, landscaping, things that make being in a town center a pleasant place to be, and really give it that sense of place and a clear branding and identity. Those are some of the elements that were pointed out. And so we really see our role as synthesizing the community feedback and that vision that you've gotten so far, and putting that into a comprehensive and conceptual design for the town center that will guide all of the future developments and enhancements and stay in line and in furtherance of those POCD goals that you have developed. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Jonathan to talk about urban design.
And next slide, yep, great. Well, this is just a figure-ground map of really the Granby Center that we drew over the last few days here, anticipating our joining you tonight. And the next few slides just go through some initial observations, but if we just look at this, and this isn't uncommon, this is what we see in many places, is the vast amount of asphalt among scattered buildings, and, you know, one of the questions I think you're going to ask us is, what do we think is, it makes a good center? Well, part of that is walkability, it's accessibility, it's beauty, it's also identity, I think. And what we see here is things that we see other places. So one of our starting points might be to start thinking about how this center becomes to embrace its own identity a little bit stronger, and that would be a good first step. We'll go to the next slide, please. And we could talk about just accessibility, or, you know, where the sidewalks are and aren't. Very simple map that shows that you can almost get around the whole center, the main block around that goes from east to west from the Village Green, but there are some missing sidewalks. I'm making a guess here that if you see at the very top, there's a little piece of green on the north side of the street that looks like there may have been a project that was approved if you put in a sidewalk, so that's one way to sort of piece this together. And if we go to the next slide, we'll see, and you can see this before, it's this main center that you have that is really sort of what we saw in Wilton a little bit, a commercial subdivision with multiple property owners, and we haven't looked into that. One of the things that came up in our mind today when we were walking around, and we've seen it in other places, is, okay, how many actual property owners do we have here, or do we have just one or two? And we've seen that a lot, where a downtown is owned by one entity, and there are challenges to both sides, but we're curious about that. But here, in that center, we want to highlight how we might deal with connectivity and accessibility within that sort of purple area. You know, what is that area and that sort of that commercial nexus that you have there, its relationship to the green? We don't have any set idea about that, that's something we want to talk about, but that is something that could be mined a little bit, and then sustainability. So you look at that, and we could go back a couple slides and see a whole lot of asphalt. Asphalt is asphalt, but it can certainly be made to be much more sustainable through low-impact design standards that layer on to asphalt or parking lot. We realize people still need cars, but there are more sustainable ways to go about this. George is going to talk about, so I'll just highlight here, is thinking about the main intersection. We crossed over there today, and I don't know if it was just me or if it's anybody, but you press the button to walk, and we never got a walk sign. It just took a long time. Frank promised me it's coming. We didn't wait, and we probably did what many people do. Can we start there? Could you call the state for us?
There would be phone call 912.
Yeah, I feel a little frustrated. We've been on the other side of conduct since Riverfront Recapture, when we first did this in 1991 under Founder's Clause, and I said you're crazy. And the only way that occurred was the leadership of Hartford, Barbara Cunnelli, who was then in Congress with the United States, and she got $30 million, and told DOT, you're not getting it until you take BFJ's planning seriously. Well, that's an exception to DOT, so they did, but my impression here is, they just put in tens of millions of dollars, I don't know how many, just did it, and, or my, if I just did it, I mean, the last time I was here.
No, it was just.
Yeah, I was here. It wasn't like that. And so having just done it, we can call, we can call DOT, but it's, yeah, it's a done, to me, it's basically a done deal, and we have to work around it and sort of accept it all the time, and we'll have ideas.
We'll have ideas with that.
Yeah, we'll have ideas.
But Frank's right, that has been a massive investment, and that makes it even harder to go and say, can you fix this mess? And they say, it's not a mess, we just, it's perfect. Next slide, please. So here we just began to think about what are the focal centers. Obviously, the Village Green, and can we think about that a little bit more carefully? This is really the main focal point, and you can see the views, even though you're like, well, you're cheating a little bit there, those are pretty zoomed out, but nonetheless, we do want to think about this moment of arrival and sense of arrival when you get here. You want to come down, and that's again, is part of identity, is a lot of different elements that go about making the identity of place, and one of those is that first impression that you come in, and so we look carefully at what those images are and the role that the Village Green would play in that, and then you have secondary ones coming in from the east, and again, we don't want to forget the back doors, if you will, it's everything is important here about Granby Center. And could we go to the next slide, please? And so here, we could think about what are the right frontages for Granby? I don't have an answer for that. I think you'd want to look at it carefully. One of the things I was trying to do this morning was find some old historic maps of this area, very close in, because often that gives you a hint about what were the traditional relationships between the building and the corridor, that pike that went through, right? You have a situation here which is very, very traditional New England green. They're often, they're at a corner, which is kind of the swerving that you have on 202, and they're set off as a little, like a shoulder bag off of there. If you look around, many, many greens throughout New England, especially through Vermont, how many of them have followed that. And so you, we want to think carefully about what might be the right frontage, how you treat the space between the building and the road, and that includes the pedestrian experience, and come up with maybe some design guidelines to set that more in place. The next slide just talks about the importance of the Village Green and possibly re-envisioning it. Again, we don't have the answer at this point because our job is synthesis and discussion with the public and with yourselves and following your leadership, but on the right, or, you know, a couple examples of a more active space, and then down below, a more passive space. One of the things that we did notice about the green today is that it goes back so far, then you hit, is it Park Place there? Right Park Place, and then you've got, there's a bunch of shops that begin with Root or end with the Root.
Yeah, crap.
Yes, sorry, sorry. Yes, but we noticed the depth there, and could we, you know, could we expand that depth? Could you have a longer view? And so if people are in the green, they're not right up against all that traffic, there's a bit more depth, and then what happens at that intersection between the back of the green and those businesses? It seems like a great opportunity for some tables and some activity there. And then finally, I think, the last thing I'd like to say just about this overall, you know, beginning to think about ideas, is how do we make this center viable and useful to everybody, to lots of different people, all the way, you know, from kids, although I read some of the information that was feedback from your outreach, and people said, yeah, kids, and then a lot of people said, no, it's not a place for kids. But we can think about youth, we can think about hours, we can think about people wanting to go out. We ate at the barn tonight, you know, that was quite nice to be outside, could be more spaces like that. And what about the elderly and people who have physical disabilities? I think thinking about that is not, it's not our idea. It really came from the feedback that you guys brought to the table, and we've looked at that very carefully. With that, I'll turn this next slide to George.
George, great.
Good, good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here, virtually. I'll just give a very quick presentation about transportation and mobility. This slide shows the typical elements that we're looking at in terms of, you know, an important one is always vehicle and pedestrian safety. Do we have any safety problems in locations with high crash rates and so on? That is something we look at. Traffic calming is always important, slowing down the speeds, you know, to make it a little more comfortable for everyone. The complete street strategy is, you know... The complete street strategy, it's, you know, Connecticut DOT believes in complete streets, so it is something that we should pursue, meaning, you know, looking at the design of the streets and making sure that they accommodate all motor people and all ages and so on. And, you know, the important part here is pedestrian connections. You know, when you look at this area photo, and it kind of begs for better connections, better pedestrian connections. You know, what we want to achieve here is people to park once and then walk around from one place to the other. That is the, the kind of ideal, you know, transportation behavior that we want to see. And then white sizing parking ratios, we will look at your parking ratios, are these appropriate, given all the changes that are happening in terms of all the uses and so on? And obviously, you know, one of my, our roles as transportation planners is to, to work with my partners here on, you know, to achieve other goals and objectives, and also listen to your local stakeholders to see what they see, what kind of complaints they have. The next slide also talks about the more specific. Can you bring up the next slide?
Yeah, the next slide, yes.
Oh, yeah. The more the priorities that we see in Granby is, you know, shared parking. Is that something that, you know, we would be, you know, sometimes we can reduce the parking supply by allowing shared parking, you know, parking uses that don't necessarily peak at the same time, you know, between office and retail, and if there's presidential uses that would be brought in here, there are opportunities, you know, to get a more efficient parking layout. We want to look at roadway diets, although it's very challenging, you know, with Connecticut DOT to talk about roadway diets, but so many times do we see, you know, and we just saw that on Main Street in East Hartford, you know, such a wide, you know, so many wide roads and their locations, their lanes and locations, so if you look at it seriously, where you don't necessarily need those lanes. So that's something we want to look at, at the key intersections here. And, you know, pedestrian crossings over State Highway, make them safe, make them shorter if possible. And then, you know, as I mentioned earlier, better internal vehicle and pedestrian connections, I think it's important. And I know sometimes it's, it's difficult to convince commercial landowners to connect to adjacent manor, but it is important to do that for vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic. So that's in short, you know, the, the mobility assignment that I see for this particular project. And I'll pass it on, I think, to Thomas as the next speaker. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, George. So my name's Thomas Vatten. As Frank said, I would just be Director of Economic Development in the city of Stanford under Mayor Barton, and I was in government for about 23 years. My specialty really as a city planner is that real estate aspect of what we look at. So I'd be working with Suzanne on really task three, looking at both the demographics and then looking at how we approach the market analysis and the regional development trends. And so a part of our market analysis that we're looking at is, we're going to be assessing both the retail, the commercial, and the residential markets, and identifying those growth opportunities, and looking at competitive pressures that would be on this area in order to try to analyze and see if this would be successful on those designs. We'd look at the regional development patterns all the way through, around, you know, we looked at these Granby and what Hartford's doing and everything. And so again, this all impacts what would happen just within Granby Center if you start to move into that development phase. One of the things that we would do is really compile those local insights, so getting on the key market drivers, meeting with people, meeting with the real estate agents, and get a really good understanding of what is happening, and then as well talking to any of the recent developers that have built anything within the area, and understanding why they picked Granby, and to understand why they went with that type of development. We would then move into more existing land use patterns and development patterns, looking at everything. We have a great GIS department, so we would use that to basically create our maps and look at the spatial distribution of the land and development intensity based on our current zoning and maybe potentially proposed zoning, to see how that would actually market impact Granby itself and your overall tax base. Because taxes are always very important. I know when I was in government, that was always how much taxes are going to get off property and what is the impact overall on our budget for both school and capital. So we provide those future-changing recommendations and how you optimize that land use. And then lastly, we're going to be reviewing the current zoning regulations, really focus on what you're, you know, the objective of the planning conservation development. We'd look at COCE zone, center edge zone, at CCC, central common zones, and sort of how do you balance commercial development and residential visibility? And this moves into what Jonathan, you know, was just talking about in terms of that overall in design. One of the things that, you know, we've done before, we've looked at village districts, I worked on the village district here in Stanford, to really create a new zone that tied all of the aspects that we're going to talk about in the study together. And so in the end, what we're doing is really sort of trying to help promote that housing diversity and encourage that sort of new mixed use that then ties in and make sure both commercial and retail are successful within the area. So with that, I'll turn it back to the next slide.
Thank you, thank you, Thomas.
I'd just like to move, just to touch on cost. We feel that we can make this figure of 75,000 work, because quite frankly, all of the, we think, necessary components in a team we've got within our own office. So it makes for an efficient team for us, and we've organized it, as you can see, into the five tasks that, that basically follow your RFP. But I just wanted to mention here, this is our, our preliminary cost proposal, so there may be things about it that you want an emphasis in a particular other area when you get into the detailed task. We're flexible, we're open to discussion on any cost proposal we make, because we haven't really, it's our first meeting with you. So it's, it's a tentative budget that we're submitting to you. The, oh, so the next slide is just the commercial part of this, which I usually do, and that is why us. And, and we just try to summarize this. We think we have this requisite experience here in Connecticut. Our office basically does have a lot of experience in New York and New Jersey. We can bring those, some types of different types of experience, I think that's valuable here. But we have this town center experience here in Connecticut. We hope we have innovative, fairly good toolbox of ideas for public outreach, for building on what you've already done, as Suzanne said, and then creating plans that Jonathan will be, that are, that are design-wise, very, very sharp and accessible and creative. And we have the capacity to do this, I think, within the timeframe outlined and within budget. We're very conscious of that. I think if you talk to our references, we have a very good, I think, history of being on time and on budget. We don't always accomplish that in a Wilton, for instance, we were on budget, but they made a decision to, hey, we want to take two more months to do this. I said, fine, fine, we stayed on budget, and, and we finished that there. A good, good example of that for us. And finally, the people here and on Zoom are actually going to be the people working on this. We're not, we're a firm of above 20 people, we're not, and I know they're not competing against us, so I always use this as an example, we're not a, a firm of 15,000 people or so, and, you know, I show up and never see, you never see me again. That's not going to be the case is, that, that, you'll see George, you'll see Thomas, this team is, is who you'd be getting should you retain us. So with that, I just want to say, we also realized you had a lot of questions, and what we did, because we didn't want to run out of time, we wanted to make sure that we went through your questions, so Suzanne, you've got these, right?
Yeah.
So, and I've got some. So what we did is we took all your questions, and we tried to answer them in writing. And I realized that this was just in case we ran out of time this evening, we wanted, you know, Thomas started, took the first crack at this, George Jokomar looked at it, Jonathan looked at it, Susan synthesized it, Suzanne synthesized it. So we can either, if you want, go through this logistically, or I want to just turn it back to you all to see how you want us to handle questions. You may have additional questions, or otherwise we could sort of go through this as a team, if you'd like. It's really up to you. I just want to make sure you knew we didn't forget those questions.
Yeah.
We spent a little time, so.
Let's, 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 thank you, appreciate that. Very good job, appreciate the presentation. Darian, I assume you are here in your capacity as a citizen who cares about what would...
Poverty over essential.
Why don't you come up to the table? Come up to the table. Catherine, can you go back so I can, is there anybody in this, this Zoom? I just want to see who else is on Zoom. Are there any other citizens on Zoom? Okay.
And just so you know, of all the people that would be here, and that were asked to come to the table, we do know each other from the past, as working professionally in another place.
Forty years, yeah.
Forty years, yeah.
Hold this for me.
Yeah, it's mostly in Brewster, mostly in New York State Brewster.
Well, what is the pleasure of the committee? My sense is that if you've given us good written answers to these, we don't have to necessarily spend a lot of time on these tonight, we can maybe go free flow, we can kind of have follow-up questions to something you said, something that may occur to us tonight. Are you guys okay with that, or would you?
That'd be fantastic.
All right. So unless you object, I'm just going to go around the table. We'll ask one question at a time, we'll keep going till, ask, repeat a question here, ask for a clarification here, ask a new question. You're going to go first, Darian.
Okay, all right. So Granby is a town of 10,000 people. It's been threatening to be 10,000 people since I graduated from here in high school in 1977. So Granby's growth is low.
Yeah.
Slow. And so most of your work is bigger projects, bigger towns. Can you give us a good example of working in a town like this, and how the size of the town affects where you end up?
Yeah, I think I could start. We have worked in a few places like Kane in Connecticut, not too many people, and, you know, so we have also worked in rural places, and Canton out on 44, and I should know Canton's population, but it's not huge, it's growing.
It's 12 and...
Yeah, and it is, it is growing.
But it has a 44.
Has a 44.
Which we don't have.
But my view is you have 202 and 20. Those are kind of significant, significant routes with a good amount of traffic volume. But I know what you're saying, Darian, it's, it's a 10,000 person, you know, community. A lot of them in Connecticut that, that we've worked with, you know, Canton's just a little bigger, does have 44, slightly different, but it's a fairly, you know, fairly rural place, couple of centers commercially to it. We've also worked, quite frankly, in a place like Groton, Connecticut. Hasn't grown a lot, but it will now. Things have changed there because of the electric vote and the new contracts from the Pentagon, and so that, that'll change, but we've worked in that area. And also, quite frankly, my, my hometown here, Madison, larger, yes, but hasn't grown really. The Madison Guilfords of the world, they haven't grown that fast, they haven't grown that much. And actually, I feel that way partly of, of good parts of the state of Connecticut have not been growing, they've been fairly static. Now, there are exceptions. Thomas Madden is from one of those in Stanford, fastest-growing city in Connecticut. And also, we're working now in Newtown. Newtown, surprisingly, it had a big growth spurt in the 19th, post-World War II. And although it's growing, you know, it's one of those growth areas, Fairfield County, it's not, it's not growing dramatically at all. So I think we're used to, and to me, the impression we have is that there are significant issues that you face, vacancies in those stores. And in fact, one, one of the lineup of stores is entirely vacant, and that's an indication to me that there's slightly, listen, everybody's facing, you know, the Amazon effect on retail, but also you need to look at that, and that's Thomas's job, looking at retail and how that mixes. And I think we have to answer that question of lower growth rate, smaller place, how do we deal with that effectively? And I think my view is that we have a, our firm, the reason we've got these little groups in our firm, we want to look at something comprehensively. We want to not only look at design, which Jonathan is, I think, you know, great at, we want to look at what's realistic. We want to look at the economics of something, I think Thomas Madden is great at that. Will we change DOT? No, but I think George is great at local roads, and, you know, not having, we're not going to change DOT, and not when they spent all this money. So we might nibble at things, but we can do local things, and your whole center, you have more control over, so I think we can, we can deal with it. But we are used to working in small, you know, some small places. I'll give you one from New York State, so it's lower population, you may know it, it's in Duchess County, Pine Plain. It's horse country, it's a beautiful area, it's downtown is about, I would just say, a fifth the size of this downtown. It's the intersection of two roads, and, you know, it's a little retail center. And it's, it's just a very nice place, but it's a, it's partly a place that's also fairly stable, its population, just the other side of Litchfield County, and it's just over the border in Duchess County. So we have worked for places that are, you know, fairly modest populations. We've worked in places you've probably never really heard of, Tannersville, New York, population 4,000. Now, we have worked in Watkins Glen, you know, places like that. So upstate New York is not growing, static, and we've worked in those, those places. So we, we can bring lessons learned from other places, not just, not just here in Connecticut.
Meg?
So this actually goes back to your written proposal. One thing that stood out to me with a sentence is that we try to honor historic roots while accommodating modern growth, and I really loved that phrasing. I noticed, not necessarily at the workshop, because I think that the people that were there were open to change and being a part of curating that change, but in other circles, I hear things like, we don't want Granby to change. And I think about this resistance, and then I think about how, how do we help the community understand that when we curate and centralize the growth, it's actually preserving the open space, and that we could actually end up greening some of the pavement a little bit more, potentially? But I'm from Colorado, and I think the danger there is this urban sprawl. So nature is a value there, and sustainability is a value there, and it's a value here. But I think sometimes that some people, and by no means all, but a few people fall into the category of black and white thinking, like if we change, then our way of rural life is gone. And I would love to know sort of how you continue to engage the public to encourage that gray level thinking, and for them to really, like you talk about, be a part of it and feel ownership. And, I mean, the people who came to the workshop were amazing. When I sat down to synthesize it, I thought, look at all these brilliant minds, we need you, I love that drawing, you know, so really making people feel valued, but also approaching those sort of black and white thinking, which probably is awful.
Jonathan particularly has, because he's, I'll turn this to Jonathan, who's, I think...
Did you want to say something?
No, no, just turn this to you, Jonathan.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think we really do believe in what we wrote, and the way I interpret that is, people are, and I think justifiably, afraid of change, and that change is on various levels, like do we grow and we become something we aren't? Or do we grow, and we don't grow that big, but we grow in a way that we don't recognize? And I think this is why, yeah, why we come back to looking at the historical roots and the patterns of Granby Center and the surrounding area. There are certain things that I think help, they're foundations of place that we can look at. It doesn't mean we have to replicate and every building has to be, and this, this came up very clearly in Wilton. We were very focused on how buildings relate to the street and what the streets are, and then we gave them a variety of hierarchies of streets, and, and one of the common problems that we see out there, and this was certainly true in Wilton, if I can, if I, if I may for a second, is that they had this zoning that sounded right, which was, we want a ground floor active, and then some residential above. sounded right, which was, "We want a ground floor active and then some residential above," but that was by special program. It was very difficult to do, but nonetheless, the requirement was over this vast area to require shops on the ground floor. And it was just too big of an area. And so you get a spot here, a spot there. What we ended up doing is concentrating that as a catalyst, that then maybe later in the future it changes, but that catalyst, so in a way, we took one of their main streets and said, "This is where you really should focus your commercial, your mixed use. Get that going as a catalyst." And then the big conversation was on, "Okay, so what does that look like?" And this gets me back to where kind of I began a few minutes ago, which was that the buildings can follow historic patterns, but they don't have to be Disney-esque replicas of something from the past. You can recognize a very beautiful, modern building that does everything right with its good proportion, good verticality, you know, and so forth, and how it addresses the street. And it can be done with fairly modern materials and look very good. And then the architects out there are really happy because they still have some authority in their design, and you get really good buildings. But back to your question about people being worried, that has not been the modus operandi in much of this region or across America. It's just whatever the developer wants and the architect says. But I think that many places are waking up, just like you are saying, "We need a plan down here because you need to control that a little bit more." And I think by explaining this and letting people know that they are part of this process of setting the ground rules that they're comfortable with, that change becomes less fearful, I hope. That's, I think, I see my fingers crossed, that's, that's kind of what we, we try to do, but it's, it, it's a great question.
And I think that public involvement will increase place attachment and identity from the get-go, which is something I like as well.
And one more thing to add sort of to that is like where we've begun already with this, with this process is looking very carefully at what you have done before and what the public has said before. That's where it begins. And I think then again, when you start talking about what kinds of changes, if people recognize that you've listened to them, you've read what they've said, you've brought that forward into the plan and the design, then it isn't as unfamiliar, because they are the ones in the first place who began to suggest certain things.
Thank you.
So I'm going to back up and give you another whack at the question that Teri asked, because I think there's a, there's a piece missing. And I, how do you add, because what we, and with, with great appreciation, I appreciate the, the planned presentation and everything and your body of work, but to, to the point, there's very little, if any, generalizability between those communities and Granby. So what steps, I mean, we are, we are not, we're not Madison Guilford because we don't have the ocean. We are not Canton because Canton's a fractured, goofy, you know, no offense to Canton, three different town centers, broken up by 44, doesn't fit. We're not Somerset, we don't have a state prison. We're not East Granby because we don't have the air. So my question is, as a team, how do you take all these large-scale things that, that you've done in other places and understand place, understand culture, rural nature? And again, I've, I've lived in town my, my entire life. Born here and went to school here. The, the pace of change would make a snail look like an Olympic athlete. So I mean, let, I think we have to acknowledge, like, means, circumstance, community, place, desire. And, and that's different in, in urban suburban, you know, the, the ludicrous pace of, of Stanford development is, is only, is only found very rarely, certainly in Connecticut if, if anywhere. So talk to me about how you, how you dive into those aspects and take what you learn and, and how you learn about our community and, and apply the, the bits and pieces from other projects that you've done.
Maybe I'll start and then turn it to others on the team. But we do feel in all our work that every place we're working, the plan, I know this is going to sound like a cliche, but the plan needs to be partly yours, but also we try to look at a place comprehensively for what is unique about it. In other words, everybody is different. No matter, I, I don't, I'm not saying that, for instance, let's take the two I know best. Guilford's different. Guilford Green is much different than Madison. Madison is different than, than the next place down, Westbrook and Clinton. So every place is somewhat different, and we, we need to approach it, we were trying to take the approach here in the timeline that we set, is building on what you've already said about yourself, listening to those, those reports, to what the public has, has said. And also delving into at the same time, the layout. Who owns what? And what is realistic here? What's the market? What is the real estate market? It's not Stanford. You're absolutely right. It is a, what we, you know, we will get all that data, we'll put that data together, and then we'll do pros and cons of options, for instance. We want to look at something comprehensively, from a design perspective, from an ownership perspective, a property perspective, real estate, what's marketable. And also, quite frankly, what are the resources? What can you or can't you do? We were out there today saying, gee, I see an option here, but this would have to be carefully done. And we're not at that stage yet. We need to review everything with you because we're careful. We've learned from other places too. For instance, we saw a particular option that, I'll just call it my own reaction right now. I'd love to expand that green, but it's not easy to do. And I'd love to change a road system just a little way, but that would require a lot. Okay, that would require a condemnation. We dealt with condemnation, but you want to avoid it if you can. So things like that, we've already said, you are, in a way, every place we're working at is not identical to anyplace else. I mean, I don't mean to say that Wilton is, that you're Wilton. You're, you're not. I can tell you the big difference in Wilton, I can tell you three or four differences in Wilton right now. They got Route 7 that doesn't come through. It doesn't go through like 44 does in Canton. And that's their problem partly. You're driving up Route 7, you don't know that Canton, that Wilton Center's there. You can't even see it, you know, that kind of thing. It's unique there. We were struggling with ways to get people in and out, graphics and identity. But by the way, when I, I haven't been here, my brother lived here at one point, so I've been here, but I hadn't come in 20 recently and from Bradley, and I was coming in that way. I said to myself, "There's no sense, there's no..." I, if I hadn't been from here, I'd known the place, I'd say, "Where is Wilton Center? Where is this?" The signage is not, you know, the signage I think could be maybe enhanced just a little bit. The sense of the place that you're here, and you're different because you got those two roads coming in, which aren't going to be changed, or more than two roads actually, but two, I, I keep thinking of 20, that's the big road, east-west, and, you know, 202 coming up, 10 202. So every place is unique, and we're going to look at it. We will look at it that way, but in a comprehensive way. Design, real estate, ownership, and what can and can't happen. What we don't want to end up with is a plan that can't be implemented easily. We've got to end up with something you can do something with, and that something is short-term. And we like at the end of our projects to say, "What can be done now?" Short-term, by short-term, I mean a couple of years. And then long-term, longer-term. So we can get some practical things done based on your, your values and what you want in the center. And then what does the real estate base, market-wise, allow? Because it's not going to allow certain things. It's not going, and they're, they're obvious, right? You don't have a strong retail market. You know, you might have a fair one, but it's not a strong one. The office market in Connecticut is variable depending on where you are, and we'll, we'll look at that residential market. What kind of mixed use can succeed here in this marketplace? So we will look at it as a unique place.
Yeah, and I think some of those answers come earlier in the process. This is sort of the existing conditions and the initial outreach and talking to stakeholders. It's a very difficult question to answer right now. I think Frank did a great job and he focused on the pragmatics. But there's still a lot of learning that we have to come in those first few months about listening to you. It's always a challenge being a consultant and even talking to a group like you, because we, we don't know whether you're, you're sitting thinking like, "Yeah, we really want a lot of growth," or "We don't want a lot of growth." We're not quite sure kind of how to respond, but we learn that as we move along. I, I would say though, you know, Frank's mentioned some of the smaller places and how did that transfer? I think the better way to do it is, is to learn from those examples, but then try and figure out what it is about Granby that you can leverage. You know, it's like, you're almost like, people wake up in a town, "Where do you want to go tonight?" "Oh, let's go to Granby for dinner," or something like that. And that's because Granby is beautiful, they have a great center, and the rural area is stunning, as I drove around today. But then you've also got this tension of wanting some growth and these, these real practical things. You've got, is it Station 280? That's brand new, right? And then I, because I drew that map, I, I can't remember, I don't know the name of the subdivision, but this is about 2019 down here on Alba Brook Circle, all brand new. I mean, is that what people are concerned about? That kind of sprawling out and then more focus on the downtown? So is there a residential market a little bit more in downtown that can do some infill? These are all questions we would talk to you about and maybe not come to the table with initial assumptions. The only assumption is that we want a successful plan that hits the mission that you've outlined in, in your RFP, which is vibrant, good for business, and accessible, and active for people. And we would work very hard towards that.
My question was similar to John's, but slight twist that was going to put on it is, you talked earlier about a lot of the POCD work that you've done in various, various towns. When you look at POCDs and you begin to formulate a strategy for a center area or any area within a town that you're employed to make recommendations to, how much of that POCD do you look at? Do you look at the full flavor of the town, all the various categories within a POCD to help you formulate design criteria, the various strengths of a town, and so forth? So that was kind of part of what my question was, and it's kind of similar to John's. And as a backup question, if you have time, it's a question about the questions. Of the questions that you answered, sometimes it's very difficult to put them down on paper. The answers, which question out of these 14 or 15 questions, would you rather answer verbally than written down on paper?
Thomas, are you still on? You took the first crack at all these written questions. So, yeah, no, I, I know. I know, I'm putting it on you a little bit, but you got...
So, so that's right. I think it was interesting. So when I actually answered these questions, I was sitting there actually doing a free-flow thought and sort of as if I was standing there doing the presentation going, "How do I actually answer these questions to you?" Because it was, I don't know, I think I ended up doing like 18 pages, you know, just to, just throwing it all up there. But, you know, when you look at it, I think some of the questions that, you know, I'd like to answer is like a number chip. What are the most common challenges your organization and team struggle with during the master planning process? And this is what every group, and I, and I know when I used to sit on your side of the table, is how do you balance the interest? And I think you sort of alluded to this a little bit, you know, you sort of grown at the same pace, but there's always a diverse interest within the community itself and different viewpoints. How do you take those viewpoints and turn those into a vision that understands where everybody wants to go? Now, is everybody going to be happy? No, they're never going to be over 100% happy. But if you can get to that general consensus, and Jonathan was talking a little bit about that, and get that effective stakeholder engagement, this really helps the plan align with the broader goals of both your POCD and the Granby Center, sort of urban design plan. And then as we start to look at it, we can then look at, well, what other changes do we want to make? So as Frank talked about earlier, we did sort of mention conduct, you know, CTDOT. Do we have to make any alignments? Do we have to do anything really that has come out of this plan and start to give you that timeline and the steps that are going to enable you to be able to make those changes in an incremental way? And again, I, I said, I was always concerned about budgets. I started out to calculate the budget quite a bit for both Towne and Burg and City of Stanford. And so it was really, really important to look at, you know, where am I going to get my grant money from? Where, how am I going to implement this? And next, which staff member is going to help me implement this? Because a lot of plans that, you know, I've seen work on is they don't have that follow-up and implementation table to move everything along. So, you know, I look at what we have here. You've already built a very successful advisory capacity already with your group link. When I was reading all the stuff that you have done and the outreach, that was all stuff that we wanted to do. You've taken a lot of that work, and we were able to synthesize that and sort of bring that back to you in our application. And I think we've got a really good foundation to move forward as we start to look at that plan and to bring around those interests that we have at the different viewpoints within the community itself. And, you know, and I think as Jonathan said, you know, we, we have to design this for all ages. It's not just the, the people that live there, but you've got to be looking at the young people. You know, Suzanne was with me when we did in, you know, Trudonnell and Newtown and a couple of other places. We go up to the kids and talk to the kids about, you know, what will bring you back to Granby and to live here, and what services are maybe they're missing. You know, a soundboard park, great park, got all the great recreation over there, but there's no connection to get the kids from there into downtown. So how do you get them for ice cream after a baseball game? You gotta hop in the car and drive. So again, you know, there's all these little things that we want to learn about and be able to try to implement into the plan so that you have something that's actually usable.
And I think the first part of your question too, Thomas, touch on. We would like to take your POCD as a very valid document and all the things that you worked on, public one, and base our work on that, so that we're basing our work partly on your POCD. So, and we're not trying to, we don't want to spend $25,000 or $30,000 in effort redoing any of your POCD. We want to see that as a good document. We're going to base ourselves on the POCD.
Right. Did, did that answer the question in a way, kind of, sort of?
Yeah, it answered the question. It's not just a honing in within the POCD of the town center. I mean, you know, look at, you look at the agricultural part of our town.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I think POCDs are remarkable in that they give you, there's this different facets to every community, right? And this is like, you see many communities, this is very true in Connecticut, and we've read these or we've worked on them. There's a great appreciation for their, what surrounds, where people are living and what's built. And it's that beautiful farmland and forest land and woodland and, and the riparian environments, all of that. And there's a lot of emphasis on how do we preserve that? And come up with, here, there's all sorts of mechanisms to do that. And you read that in the POCD, you instantly, you begin to understand the values that those people have on that kind of space. And another facet is that they have a very different opinion about their center, for example, that they can, and it doesn't mean that it, if they're opposing each other. You can have this, but this is important to us as well. And I think that's, again, part of rural identity and, you know, this is like, reminds me of an old plan for Onadaga County up in, in, in New York, where normally people would say, "Oh, let's do a development here and create a center." And the, the approach was very different. It was like, "Well, how has this traditionally happened in rural areas?" Well, you know, development has been scattered, but it's mostly around the crossroads. So can we build up a little here? Can we build up a little there? Rather than seeing housing sprawling out over this beautiful green pasture land that we have. And that's the plan they adopted. It's an old plan, but I always remember it as just being, "Good, spot on." You know, understanding that larger picture. And so we certainly do try to look at that, and if we are brought on and we don't look at it hard enough, just tell us.
You will.
Kathy, you open? Sure. Abby?
So looking at the timeline that was presented, I noticed that there were two presentations slotted in there, so about six months and then the final. slotted in there. So about six months and then the final. But it sounds like there will be additional outreach with business community and, okay, so just want to clarify, there will certainly be opportunities.
Yeah, these were just the two sort of we saw need for a bigger workshop inviting everybody. And in fact, you've given me a good question. We were talking over dinner. This is not a P O C D, so you're not required to hold a public hearing. It's up to you. We just thought at the end, there ought to be either a presentation to everybody with a final document, or you may want to turn that into a hearing. But that's up to you. That's your decision. It's not required for this type of study. But there will be, we want to meet with, and Thomas is going to really want to do this, we want to meet with the business community, we want to meet with the property owners, we want to meet with who's there and get a sense of what are we actually able to do. The last thing, and I know Jonathan always calls me a pragmatist here, but the last thing I want is some plan that can't be implemented. You need something that can actually happen. It's why, for instance, I just want to be honest. I wouldn't take on DOT on an intersection they just did. But I would talk to them about where we have ideas on roads you control within the center. Could they be better done, better aligned? And we may need, and an option we come up with is another curb cut that might involve DOT. And that's fine. We're interested in, we know DOT, so George can work with them. And if we can take that approach, I would call that a more pragmatic approach. What I don't want to do is deal with DOT on something we know we're not going to win on. And that would be detrimental to you, waste your money. And so we have some sense of that, you know, what we can and can't do. And on the other hand, we will provide options to you. We have, we spotted an option out there that I, if we're retained, I'd like to talk to you about because I see some opportunities, we all do, see some opportunities out there. We don't want to just put those out until we actually study the area and know who the property owners are and what you can and can't do there. But we got a couple of ideas already.
And so just as a quick follow up to that, so certainly understand and respect the timeline, the scope of work, the budget. But if, you know, we engage you and as we move forward in the process, if there's a certain item that comes up, it's like, oh, we really want additional feedback or public input on that, is there flexibility to work with you on that public engagement strategy, to have some targeted sessions on a particular topic if it's necessary? Or what does that look like from your end?
It depends on how big that is. For instance, a workshop, you know, workshop where we're inviting a lot of people and those are fairly expensive because we have a team here and we, to be interactive enough, we've got to have, you know, if we're dealing with tables or we're dealing with responses on them. However, if it's, you know, Zoom meeting with five real estate people, four developers, that kind of thing we intend to do in any case. We want to have those meetings. It's part of what we do as part of the study. So to us, that's built into our fee. We want to have those meetings, key meetings, like, we kind of tend, call them stakeholder meetings, for lack of a better term. So we would do that in any case. But if something came up, the, be a good example, this does happen to us, and just trying to think of the latest one, but Wilton comes to mind where Wilton said, hey, we want to take a pause of two months. We want to rethink something. We think we made a mistake the way we've, or what changed their view partly was that a huge proposal coming in, they wanted to accept. And we said, look, take the time because we want to get it right. And so we delayed the process, but at their request, because we always try to stay on time, obviously for a reason. It helps us stay on budget. But we took that time because it was very important with this big developer coming in to get it right. And so we're willing to do that. But if it's something, you know, if it's another big workshop, that could be, that could be a budget item. Because workshops can run us, you know, they run us $3,000 or $4,000 to just do a workshop. But we've got two, we've got two big presentations built into this.
Thank you.
But there is definitely flexibility. I'm just thinking about different ways that we've engaged stakeholders. So for example, in Wilton, we went door to door and met individually with stakeholders. Actually, they were proprietors and property owners because they're not always the same. In Branford, for example, we held small focus groups where we had six or seven people who came and they were all either part of the development community, or they were property owners and they were proprietors. And that's how we managed to, in a way, cover a lot more people a little bit more efficiently. And so it depends on kind of what you're asking, but yeah, there's definitely flexibility and, you know, part of it is, to a certain degree, the more information, direct feedback we have, the more savvy the plan will be. And it's all positive.
We'll just add, we have a suite of online tools as well that we like to utilize. And those can range from ongoing engagement that we leave up throughout the process, things like through social pinpoint, we have an ideas wall, and that is essentially a wall of sticky notes online. You know, we moderate to make sure nothing inappropriate is posted on there. But, you know, the point is to ensure that people have an opportunity if they can't attend a workshop, if they, you know, have work or childcare or other things that prevent them from being able to come in person. We want to make sure there's other avenues for them to share their inputs. So we've seen online engagement, a nice way to supplement those in-person events for those who can't attend.
Anything else? First and editorial, because everybody has asked some portion of this question. So I don't want to answer this. It's actually not a question. But I'll give you my own personal answer to your question of what kind of growth do you want in this town? And I actually think it comes from most of my interaction with our constituents. If you ask them that question, they'd say, we don't want anything from this town. Except to the extent that we need growth to be able to afford all the other things we already have in Granby that we enjoy, right? So the citizens will tell you, they love all of the permanently preserved open space we have in this town, which is significant. And that comes at a significant indirect, if nothing else, cost to the town. They love our strategy around and actually wish we would be more aggressive in promoting and preserving agricultural uses, which have a significant indirect impact on our town, right? And they love the rural character where you get outside this area and, you know, it's very low density. Those are the kind of things that they will fight for. So I think what we're looking for is the best overall strategy that takes this center, which is where we have our infrastructure, where we've invested, and use it as a way to help expand our grand list and our economic growth in a way that we can continue to enjoy the other things. So now my questions are, so at the end of the day, what I hope we have at this process is a document that can serve primarily two purposes. One is for the Board of Selectment and the other related boards in helping us make decisions related to the allocation of resources. By the way, the question about providing an outline for what this thing will look like at the table contents was mine. I'm relatively confident that this document you described here, if we're successful, accomplishes that goal. There'll be enough in this document that the Board of Selectment and our constituents can make resource allocation decisions. The second purpose though, that I hope we get out of this process, is more precise, and it's a document that our Planning and Zoning Commission can actually use to make individual land use decisions. So now my question, in those two, when we're done, you hand us a document, in those two areas, what will be left for us to do? Will this document do it? Or will there be other things we will have to do as a result of this document?
I think there'd be two other things at least that I hope the document will set the stage for, and that is, that may be zoning. We don't know that yet, but many times it is, if we get the right design guidelines, or as George Akmar said, your parking ratios may be fine, but they may not be. There may be things that we can do with those that would give us a better efficiency in parking. But that would need action. That would need action by P and Z to adopt that zone. And the other thing more related to the selectmen is really the capital budget and resource allocation. And we need to understand that from you. And it's usually, those are usually sensitive items because you're spending a taxpayer dollar and you want to spend it in the most effective way. And so I, I think we're, we try to be very sensitive to that. I was kind of brought up in that Connecticut. I'll just describe it as my father did, is the Connecticut Yankee.
Frugality.
Frugality, yeah. Parsimonious was the other word he used. And, you know, he said, look, what good planning in Connecticut is supposed to be about. And actually, I found this at O P M with their director who recently got a A S. He is deceased now, but his name was Horace Brown. And it was my first planning job that I had out of school with Capital Region Planning Agency in Hartford. And one thing Horace said about the plan of the state of Connecticut was, remember, it's not a land use plan, it's an infrastructure plan. This plan is about how you wisely spend the taxpayers' money, also called sewer avoidance. And so that was drilled into me. And I think the allocation of resources in the capital budget has to be carefully done with selectmen. So we get something done. Something has to be done that you can afford to do. And that's why we'd look at short terms, some short term things that may not cost a lot of money, based on a long range plan though, a plan that you can then implement in stages.
So let's go back to the planning and zoning role. So this process will definitely end in recommendations that you will make to our existing zoning code that we would need to do to implement the plan. You talked a little bit about a form based code. Will this end in a form based code? Or will it end in a list of things we should consider in a form based?
Short answer is no. It will not, it will not end in a form based code. Because the form based code itself, to develop it right, would cost the whole budget. So, and you may not want a form based code here. You may or may not. We're kind of, well, we have an honest discussion between Jonathan and I a lot. Jonathan being a designer, a great architect, and very familiar with form based code. So we can do that if you end up there. But on the other hand, in many places, I can do this, I can achieve the same thing with a less expensive, easier set of design guidelines implemented by P and Z as part of Site Plan Review. So there's that two tension in our, not tension, it's a kind of a nice discussion in our firm between what kind of place actually can use a form based code and which kind of place may not need it, but may need a simpler thing. And biggest lesson for me was in a little place called Pauling, New York, we worked with a very famous planner, Andre Stone. He developed, he was one of the leading guys to develop the idea of form based code. We did a whole form based code for the entire village of Pauling. And at the public hearing, one of the first questions was, a woman got up, I never forgot, and said, if I hired Frank Lloyd Wright to design my home, could he do it in your form based code? And the honest answer I had to say was, no. And that is not where you want to be. That is not where you want to be. We want a code flexible enough so some great architects can do some good work, but you also want design guidelines to tell them the direction you want to be in.
So that's my last question. So is the answer the same with respect to the design guidelines? At the end of this process, are you handing us a set of design guidelines or a set of recommendations that we would need to build with them?
It'll be a set of recommendations. And Jonathan, unless you feel you can do more.
I think within the plan, we can outline some very key principles. And, you know, a plan is really about goals and objectives and less about the technical. And usually it does follow up with implementation tools, zoning, design guidelines and things like this. Within the plan, we can, as I said, outline some very key principles as beginning ideas. If you have a talented P and Z, which I'm sure you do, they can, they can follow that along, right? And they can apply that. Often later on, you might need some more direct. Maybe I just lost the job.
As a director and one of the members sitting at the end of the table.
Well, there's really two options. No, seriously, guys, what I'm saying is that it does take, you know, to go from concepts and principles to that actual implementation. Because what happens is, is all of us, we get up in front of very persuasive architects who tell us this is going to be a great idea. And at the end of the day, it isn't so great. And what the plan will do, will outline these concepts and principles. If you want something that's a little bit more, in a way, a direct guidebook, this is more preferred, this is less preferred, or don't do this, do this, that would probably come out in a design guideline manual, right? A streetscape manual or something like that. But we can, our plan will have lots of graphics and drawings of sections of streets and ideas for signage and these kinds of things.
So P and Z will be able to take that, if you agree. I mean, I don't know how you're operating, but to me, site plan review with P and Z or subdivision review, you have a plan and it's got design suggestions and guidelines in it. I find, at least where we've been working, P and Z's, P and Z makes that, says, hey, we've got this study. This is what it says. We'd like to see you respond to that. Most experienced developers would do that because they're going to say to themselves, we don't do that. I might spend another three months with P and Z. We work for some of these people, so they're going to listen to you. So that option would allow P and Z to just take our study and interpret it with the development community. The second option though, is if you wanted more teeth beyond P and Z, you know, making suggestions that, hey, you got to look at this, then that would be a follow up. Either changes in the zoning code to write in those design guidelines, or as Jonathan said, a design, a design book, a set of design guidelines. Because that is.
I'm trying to pitch you the softball. For me, I'm hoping the answer will be that at the end, we will, as you are going, similar to you're going to give us a list of things that our zoning code might, we might want to look at. You're going to give us a list of 10 things that if we wanted to adopt specific design guidelines that covered this area, 10 things, 12 things that those guidelines should contain.
We would give you that.
But that's going to be part of what.
Yes, that will be.
Those are.
All I'm trying to say, all I'm trying to say there though, so that I'm clear, is to give you that. However, I've learned, you have your own counsel, everyone does in Connecticut, your own legal counsel. Translating though, sometimes if you want to go a next step and you want to go beyond that into an actual code, that's different because it ends up working through the legal process and level law changes.
Oh, of course, yeah.
Right. And that was part of my question earlier about the plan of conservation and development touches upon some of these exact things. So none of this is a surprise. P O C D talks about revealing the whole town's zoning. So that's what I was trying to get at. That needs to be looked at and implemented for our town. And how do we get there as a working document, something that we can force planning and zoning to head in that direction?
All right. And we can definitely do that. Any other questions?
I'd like to mention.
Go ahead.
There are. I'd like to mention another product that would come out of this study. I'd like to mention another product that would come out of this study, besides the ones that were just mentioned, and that's related to the public engagement. You know, the public engagement for us is very important, number one, we want to learn, we want to learn what the elements related to, you know, the question that we heard at the beginning about the size and the special character of Grand B Center. But it's a two-way kind of communication, where we also will transmit ideas and get people interested and excited about some of these design recommendations. So then, I see another product as, you're going to have a constituency that's more interested in pursuing these ideas and supporting the P&amp;Z in these strategies. So we see that also as an important, you know, product of our involvement with your local stakeholders, property owners, residents, business people, and so on. I think it's important as well.
We had people at the workshop write down that they want design guidelines that came up multiple times, so I do think it's something people want.
I do, and it's, it's come up in a couple of different threads, but I'm curious from a, from a level of specificity, is with all due respect to planners, we spend way too much time on planning and not enough time on execution. In your experience, what gets a plan to execution? Is it partnerships, is it funding, is it opportunity, is it a piece of the plan that is, that is tightly scripted? I guess in other ones that you have seen, that it has actually been operationalized and come off the shelf, and somebody actually did the things that you told them to do, what was the, what was the catalyst or the key to it actually happening?
Ownership by you, ownership by P&amp;Z, and we've got to be close to what you want to do, the public has supported, and that you, it's a plan that you want, it's got to be your plan, because without you in back of it and behind it, it's not going to get implemented, it needs to be your plan, and we need to be closely tied in communication with you and in hearing from the public as to what is implementable, because otherwise, you are the people who will, who will end up implementing it. And the second thing is, it has to be based on real estate feasibility.
Hey, Frank, can I jump in?
Go ahead.
As someone who, as someone who's been implementing plans at the municipal level for well over 20 years, you know, Frank was touching on specifically the ownership side of everything. You need to take this plan, and with that implementation matrix that we haven't yet, we will assign certain departments responsibilities for that plan. The only way this ever gets implemented is that they must report back to the town board and to work it into the overall work plan and budgeting for this to work. Otherwise, it will be a plan that sits on a shelf, and that is the only way I have seen successful plans come to fruition, and where you actually have, plan is a change agent for the municipality. So in the end, that's one of the things, this is why I'm here, is I sit down, and we're doing this with Newtown, all the stuff that we're going to have to work through with each of the departments, and then hold them responsible at that town board level to make sure that they're reporting back and it works into that capital budget, because otherwise it will not work. Sorry, I may have just thrown in a view right there, like Jonathan said, but I'm telling you from my experience, this is the way it works.
We try to do that at the end of every plan, try to assign, try to say, okay, here's the next steps, and who's going to do it, type of thing. And then, we also try to recommend, assign somebody, maybe it's, I don't know who that would be here, because we don't know you well enough, assign somebody one year from now, and say, okay, here's the report card so far. If you get that, you know, type of thing, then you start to get follow-up, but that's why I said originally, it's got to be your plan, or it can't be our plan, I mean, we just can't come in, we always try not to do that, to come in, well, yeah, we've got brilliant ideas, and, fine, our brilliant ideas could end up on a shelf. It needs to be your plan, it needs to be based on public input, and the input of the property owners, realtors, you know, people who are here, and then, you know, I think then the chances of getting it implemented are much, much greater.
Anybody else? You guys have any questions for us?
The normal question is, when do you expect to make a decision, or when do you expect to start? It's just a question, we don't have any.
We're interviewing one other firm, so I suspect that, a couple weeks maximum, right? Because they're coming in doing the same thing you just did, a week from today. So, get us through that, then we get back together and kind of make a decision, so.
Sure.
Sounds great. Right, right, good point. So Abby is reminding me that this committee is a recommending committee, right? So, so it may be a little bit longer, a couple weeks to be, make the official decision, because this, whatever we, whatever recommendation we have will be sent to the Board of Selectmen, and we'll have to work around Board of Selectmen's schedules, so. Best-case scenario, it's early September, worst-case scenario, mid-September, before it's stamped, because.
Then it's official.
Yeah, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, thank you. Very well, thank you.
Do you need any extra copies of anything? We have the presentation.
What about Eric?
What's it?
Eric Myers.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We can also pull off a digital copy, too, if you'd like.
Yeah, leave us whatever copies you brought. Do we have this? Do we have any presentations? So there's a full set right there, that's it, right?
Yes.
Okay, two full sets is what we, we bought, five or six others, so I think we bought nine. Andy, you have them, do you want, you don't want copies of this? You're welcome.
I got what I need.
All right, well, we're here in the official public session, do you have anything you want to add?
Abby, if you do want additional copy, just, we can send.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, we're almost done, if you want to.
Oh, good for you.
I don't see anybody on stage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Should we sit for a little longer? You're welcome, we're almost done, we're going to adjourn here in a second. Do you want me to kick them out before? They're only going to go watch the tape, anyway.
They are very prepared.
No, this process is extremely familiar to me, I do their work, so it's not like I'm unfamiliar with how this works. Unfortunately, my ability to participate is ups, it goes up and down, because I do their work, I can only attend so many things, so that don't assume that my lack of attendance is a lack of interest.
Understood, understood, you're welcome anytime, and you know how to find at least me, too. All right.
And our committee email, please, it's a solid mass.
No, I paid, I read your email.
Anything else? All right, I accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Those in favor? Hi, all right, thank you, everybody.